... Now call this meeting toward the time is five fifty.
I don't hear you, Ramon.
I don't either.
No. It's five fifty four P M. 5:54 PM. I now call this virtual meeting to order, the time is 5:58 PM.
This time, I will call roll. When your name is called, please answer with here, present. Ramon Garza.
Present.
Jeff Miller, Vice President.
Here.
Adrian Stevens, Secretary. Trustees, Wilford J. Broussard, Jr.
Here.
Wanda Heath Johnson.
Present.
Noe Asparza.
Here.
And Norma Hernandez.
Here.
Also joining us through video conference and will respond with here or present are Sharona Johnson, Executive Director of School and Community Relations.
Present.
Brishen Thompson, Coordinator for School and Community Relations. Anna Salinas, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent's Office. Harold Sonny Fletcher III, Senior Director for Facilities and Planning and Construction.
Present.
And S2 Architects Incorporated.
Present.
Ryan Clements, Executive Director for Security and Cyber Security, Chief of Police and Interim Director for Technology.
Present.
Elizabeth Valdez, Executive Assistant to the Board of Trustees and Superintendent.
Here.
And various Cabinet members. And I, John Moore, Superintendent of Schools, here. Staff members will practice social distancing as required and outline will use mask and hand sanitizer disinfectant as recommended. I will now turn this meeting over to Ramon Garza, Board President.
Ms. Valdez, are there any citizen participation items for this evening?
We have no citizen participation items today.
Ms. Valdez, are there any public comment items for this evening?
We have no public comment items today.
I will now turn the floor over to Harold Sonny Fletcher III, Senior Director for Facilities Planning and Construction and S2 Architects Inc., who will present design options for Pyron Elementary Replacement.
Good evening, President Garza, Board, Superintendent and Cabinet. Got Madeline here with me tonight.
Hello.
All right. Here to, let's get this, there we go. Going to talk about our Pyron Elementary School replacement project. As we look at the plan, north is up. This is our Phase One plan. We're going to be building this in a two-plus phase. Of course, build the new Pyron here on the left. The campus will essentially stay in their existing building while we build, while we build Phase One. Got a couple portables right here in this area. Those, since they're using those as classrooms, we'll be putting a couple of portable buildings down here. And you see where we'll have walkways connecting, just like the students connect going to the gym today. As part of Phase One construction, we'll be constructing the student drive from Hillier, right? My one down on them. Student pickup, drop off, be constructing that, getting our new parking lot. Of course, we'll have detention constructed. You all heard us talk a lot about that. That'll be down here to the right or to the left, sorry. That pretty well gets us through Phase One. Something you don't see us talk about a lot in Houston, construction or retaining walls. In this area of the site, this drops off into hunting by you. So we will have some retaining walls. I just wanted you all to see that because it's not, we noted that. That's not something you see very often in Houston construction. Then as Phase Two is constructed, envision the students moving into Phase One. We demolish the existing building. Running through our final classroom counts, but you know, COVID and teachers and programs located other, program location, we've showing modular buildings, the portables, keeping those for now. And then, of course, got a walkway to connect to those portables while we build Phase Two. Floor plan. As we look through that Phase One, Phase Two. That line runs right through here, right, Madeline? Coming right through there. So we'll be building all the classrooms like we've been building Woodman Acres Elementary, Galena Park Elementary, North Shore Elementary. This is a two-story classroom wing down here. Pre-K, K, first grade on the first floor, second through fifth upstairs. Science classroom, as you can see downstairs, science classroom upstairs. You know, student parent drop off here. Main entry over here on the left, right into the front with administration. See our typical security vestibule there. And then something unique at this campus, and we've got a rendering here to show you. Going to have some outdoor dining. They get a lot of parents coming and having lunch with their, with the kids, their students. So we'll have that there. Trying to think, Madeline, anything else we should point out here? Library, that's LRC, Learning Resource Center, right in the middle. Front elevation of the school. Committee. That Mr. Rivera assembled over there, the stone, the brick color choices. And the overall look of the school was, this is the, they gave Madeline, I'd say, some language to work with, and this is the design. So this is right in the front, main front door, although there's a car shown here. Nine times out of 10, that'll probably be a school bus. But obviously, for a rendering, that would block our view looking at the, looking at the building. This view, although you feel maybe we're looking at a brick wall, it was important to show because this is what it will feel like from Pepper. Coulson, thank you, from Coulson. So we're going to have a two-story building. Up close there, you can see a little bit of how we're building up the soil. We talked about that a lot on this site. After Harvey, we've got to build up our finished floor elevation. That would be, now, the cars would be absolutely appropriate here. That would be into the cafeteria dining right in this door and into the PE room gym through that door. And this, of course, would be student pickup. Drop off. We talked about that outdoor dining, of course, and then didn't quite draw attention to it on the plan, but we're going to have some outdoor learning that was really important to the committee. We did some of that at Cloverleaf, well-received, so be doing some of that here as well. Just, this is our, the way GP ISD does our ed spec. We put our program of spaces in here. It's the final piece of the ed spec that the statute requires the board. And then, of course, our budget. There, that's the best picture. Any questions from Madeline or I? Well, Madeline's done a great job with this design. We're obviously very excited.
Sonny, they asked what the timeframe was.
Timer ring, we'll be putting it, the construction manager at risk will be putting it out to bid in the late spring. Anticipate coming to the June board meeting with the guaranteed maximum price. Construct it for a year. That would give us Phase One. And then they estimate, so that would put us June of 2022. And then we'd be about nine months, nine months to a year after that to finish Phase Two. So 2023. Good, good question.
Anybody else?
How high is the retaining wall? I couldn't quite hear you, Mr. Asparza.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Retaining wall could be as high as six feet, Madeline, would you say?
At the most.
At the most, it'd be at six feet. So there'd be a fence at the top of that to protect folks. Excellent question.
They won't be able to climb, correct?
No, no, we, we, I really like that fence like the district installed at Green Valley a number of years ago, and we've installed it at Cloverleaf. I don't believe you can climb it. It's a nice-looking black, black vinyl fence, and it's, we've had a lot of good luck with that. Not being able to be climbed.
Anybody else?
Thank you all.
There being no other business before the board, this time the meeting is adjourned, the time is 6:09 PM. President, I will now call the virtual public hearing to order, the time is 6:11 PM. Ida Schultz, Executive Director for Budget and Financial Services, will conduct the public hearing to discuss the school's first annual financial management report. As this time, I will turn the floor over to Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I shared my screen. Do y'all see that?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Moore and Board of Trustees and Cabinet. I'm pleased to be here tonight to report on the 18th Annual Schools First Report. To give y'all some information about our ratings for this year. For the ease of delivery, I've broken this presentation into three sections. First, I'll provide a brief overview of what Schools First is. Second, we'll take a look at the components of the annual financial management report. And finally, will we be going to Park ISD's ratings for this year? Schools First is essentially a report card of the district's financial condition, assigning us a grade between A and F, similar to a student's report card. FIRST is an acronym for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. It was developed by TEA in 1999 and was first put into practice in fiscal year 2002. And it uses our PMS submissions data to calculate indicators of our financial condition. The report always lags a year behind, so the results that I present to you tonight are really based on the expenditures from our fiscal year 2019. There's 15 performance indicators for rating year 2020 that can be broken into three categories that measure our critical financial components, our financial solvency, and finally, our financial competency. The indicators are rated differently, where the first five questions are simple yes-no answers with no points assigned to them. These are our critical indicators that deal with our annual financial audit, our compliance with our debt agreements and our governmental filings. Any single negative response to one of these five questions would create an automatic failure. And the remaining of the indicators, number six through 15, deal with our financial management, solvency and competency. Each question is worth 10 points, up to 10 points, for a maximum score of 100 points. The scoring rubric then determines the status earned by the district and assigns us a letter grade A throughout. According to the School First Regulations, the district is required to have a public hearing each year within 60 days of TEA's final ratings release. In addition, we issue an annual financial management report that can be found on the district's financial transparency website under the section labeled Schools First Reports. The report communicates the district's overall performance rating as well as the rating for each of the 15 individual indicators based on the 2018-19 fiscal year. The report also includes required disclosures and reference to our Board of Trustees and our Superintendent. We must disclose any gifts received from vendors that are over $250 and any business transaction that occurs between a Board of Trustees or the Superintendent and the district itself. We must provide information related to the current Superintendent's income and have included the Superintendent's contract in the report. No additional income was received by the Superintendent during the 2018-19 fiscal year from outside of Galena Park ISD. The final disclosure we're required to show is reimbursements made to our Superintendent and to our trustees. Almost all of the reimbursements made are related to registration fees or travel associated with conferences and district business-related events. For the 2020 performance rating, I'm happy to report that Galena Park ISD received 96 out of 100 points, earning a superior rating for the 18th consecutive year. That's all I have to present to y'all this evening. But if you have any requests regarding the Schools First Report, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for Ms. Schultz?
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time and for y'all's support of the Business Office.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. The public hearing is adjourned, the time is 6:16 PM. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. The public hearing is adjourned. The time is 6:16 PM. We will now move on to this evening's regular call meeting. Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular call meeting on Monday, November 9, 2020 via video conferences. The time is 6:17 PM. I want to welcome the viewers to this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, the Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees. We are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policies for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members receive information related to items on today's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on this notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to hear the matters discussed. Thank you for taking the time to join us today and for the interest in Galena Park Independent School District.
At this time, I will call roll. When your name is called, please answer with here or present. Ramon Garza, President.
President.
Jeff Miller, Vice President.
Here.
Adrian Stevens, Secretary.
Here.
Trustees, Wilford J. Broussard Jr.
Here.
Wanda Heath Johnson.
Present.
Noe Asparza.
Here.
And Norma Hernandez.
President.
Also joining us through video conference, and we'll respond with here or present, are Sharona Johnson, Executive Director for School and Community Relations.
Here.
Brishan Thompson, Coordinator for School and Community Relations. Anna Salinas, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent's Office.
Here.
Brian Clement, Executive Director for Security/Cybersecurity, Chief of Police, and Interim Director for Technology.
Here.
Elizabeth Valdez, Executive Assistant to the Board of Trustees and Superintendent.
Here.
Cabinet Member, Sonya George.
Here.
Dr. Wanagia Kona.
Here.
Elizabeth Layler. Terry Moore.
Here.
Dr. Michelle Epps.
Here.
Deana Edgar.
Here.
Dr. David Harris.
Here.
Mike McKay.
Here.
Holly Malloy.
Here.
And I, Dr. John Moore, Superintendent of Schools.
I am here. Staff members will practice social distancing as required and outline. We will use masks, hand sanitizers, disinfectants, as recommended. I will now turn this meeting over to Ramon Garza, Board President.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Ms. Valdez, are there any citizen participating items for this evening?
We have no citizen participation items today.
Ms. Valdez, are there any public comment items for this evening?
We have no public comment items today.
We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
This evening, we will have some special recognitions. I would like to congratulate everyone being recognized today. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to Sharona Johnson, Executive Director of School and Community Relations.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Moore. I am pleased to assist with the recognition portion of this evening's meeting. We are excited to recognize an area business, the GP ISD Business Services Department, and an outstanding student from North Shore Senior High School. Let's begin by recognizing the R. Rocha Trucking Incorporated Company for their donation of 25 cases of water to Galena Park Elementary School, Galena Park Middle School, and Galena Park High School. In addition, the Rocha family also donated over 400 masks for students at Galena Park Middle School. We would like to thank the R. Rocha Trucking Incorporated Company, represented by Rodolfo Rocha and family, for providing our students with water and masks. Next, Galena Park ISD will recognize the Business Services Department for receiving an award of a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. Galena Park ISD's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CASR, for the fiscal year ended August 31, 2019, qualified for the Government Finance Officers Association's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. This is the ninth year in a row Galena Park ISD has earned this prestigious award. Congratulations to Sonya George, Galena Park ISD's Deputy Superintendent and CFO, Ida Schultz, our Executive Director for Budget and Financial Services, and all of the other highly valued and appreciated members of the GP ISD Business Services Department. Lastly, Galena Park ISD recognizes Osvaldo Castro for his accomplishment as a commended student in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. Commended students placed among the top 50,000 scorers of more than 1.5 million students who entered the 2021 competition by taking the 2019 Preliminary SAT or National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Osvaldo has demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success, and his accomplishment represents the key role North Shore Senior High School has played in his academic development. Congratulations, Osvaldo. Thank you. This concludes the recognition portion of this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any board member will make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member. They may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment at this time?
I do. I have a comment. I'd like to give thanks and appreciation to Viviana Killian and her secretary, Belinda Mendoza. They did an awesome job in the election. She had all kinds of fire packets coming from her department, and she campus informed the entire time. She did an amazing job. Even though I, it took me three hours and 20 minutes to vote, it was still not any part of Galena Park ISD, but it was Harris County. So anyway, I just want to hats off to her and her team. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Harold Sonny Fletcher III, Senior Director for Facilities, Plattings, and Construction, will provide a 2016 bond program construction update.
Good evening, President Garza, Board, Dr. Williams and Cabinet. Hopefully that shared. Talk about our bond construction progress and a little bit of design progress. First, I'm sure it's not, go to the next slide. There we go, Hocentos City Elementary, obviously. Picture on the left, got our additions far enough along. We're getting the playgrounds down, and that's the artificial turf there in the picture on the left. Very excited about that. And then the picture on the right, you see the dense glass sheathing going on, the addition there at Hocentos City Elementary. Then it, just as exciting, Galena Park High School, picture on the left is an air handling unit being lifted in order to get a better curb and better flashing underneath that. And in the picture on the right, there are construction, very excited to see the structural steel going up and the bar joists and decking going on there at Galena Park High School. North Shore Ninth Grade Center, of course, they were doing our bond renovation work in the locker rooms. Those are the plumbing risers, and of course, the CMU concrete masonry unit walls going in to put those up. And then, of course, our projects in design. We just saw Pyburn Elementary School schematic design have that coming back to the board in the first of the year for guaranteed maximum price, and we're still working through our Galena Park High School additions and renovations. And then if it meets y'all's pleasure, we'll be our, starting our design on our summer 2021 work. Thank you. And any, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you, and apologies to Dr. Moore. I believe I said Dr. Williams out of force of habit. I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Jared Link, Executive Director for Human Resource Services, Compliance and Hearing, will present the CDA Local Other Revenues Investments for the first reading as presented.
Okay, can you guys see that screen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, President Garza. Good evening, Dr. Moore, Board members, members of Cabinet. This will be very brief. Let me make sure I can get this, see if I can, okay. These are some very brief changes to board policy, CDA Local Other Revenues as Investments. These changes have come upon the advisement of Linda Patterson and Associates, who has recommended to our business office to make the following changes. Changes being an extension on commercial paper investments from a maturity of 180 days to 270 days. This allows more flexibility due to limited availability of short-term investments in the current rate environment. CDA legal does allow up to 365 days. And then a very brief change to the language in regard to the clarification on general and revenue and consideration to debts. And that, I believe, is it. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Link? Thank you, Mr. Link. With respect to the general consent agenda, do we want to remove any items for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I move that we take the agenda as is.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
And I'm sorry, Wanda Johnson made the first motion.
Ms. Johnson, can you repeat, repeat?
I, Wanda Johnson, will we have the general consent agenda as presented?
Oh, I, Wanda Johnson, move that we take the agenda as, as it is.
General consent, gentlemen, sorry.
It was echo.
General consent, agenda as presented.
Wanda Johnson moved that we take the agenda as presented.
And Norma seconded. If the motion passes, I, Ramon Garza, authorize GP ISD to utilize my electronic signature for these items. Ms. Stevens, do you authorize the use of electronic signature as well? A motion was made by Wanda Heath Johnson and seconded by Norma Hernandez. As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, opposed, or abstained. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens in favor.
Wilford Broussard.
Wilford Broussard in favor.
Wanda Johnson.
Wanda Johnson in favor.
Noe Asparza.
Noe Asparza in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motions carry seven to zero with no extensions. With respect to the construction consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Norma Hernandez.
The construction consent agenda as presented.
I, Adrian Stevens, second the motion.
If the motion passes, I, Ramon Garza, authorize GP ISD to utilize my electronic signature for these items. Ms. Stevens, do you authorize the use of electronic signature as well?
Yes.
A motion was made by Jeff Miller and seconded by Adrian Stevens.
Yes.
Please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, opposed, or abstained. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller in favor.
Adrian Stevens. Wilford Broussard.
Wilford Broussard in favor.
Wanda Johnson.
Wanda Johnson in favor.
Noe Asparza.
Adrian Stevens in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motions carry seven to zero with no extensions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any items for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Norma Hernandez, move we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
If the motion passes, I, Ramon Garza, authorize GP ISD to utilize my electronic signature for this. Ms. Stevens, do you authorize the use of electronic signature as well?
Yes.
A motion was made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Noe Asparza. As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, opposed, or abstained. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens in favor.
Wilford Broussard.
Wilford Broussard in favor.
Wanda Johnson.
Wanda Johnson in favor.
Noe Asparza. Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motions carry seven to zero with no extensions. Information, A, Sonya George, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operations Support, presented, one, the annual investment report for the period of September 1, 2019 through August 31, 2020. Two, comparative tax collection report for the period of September 1 through September 30 for the fiscal years of 2019 through 2020, and 2020 through 2021. Donation report for October 2020. Four, the 2016 Bond Program Financial Report as of September 30 of 2020. B, Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Education Support and School Administration, presented, one, the early head start policy council meeting minute for September 2020. Two, the early head start updated fund 205 expenditure report summary for September 2020. There being no other business before the board at this time. The regular meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:35 PM.